Yeah, I have three of them. They're getting much up.
I have four.
What one did you have? What other did you have?
Eleven thirty five.
Kimbridge eight seventy four.
It's only seven minute two.
Oh, it's the wrong, it's the wrong account. Look at the month, blow it.
Yeah, it's the wrong Kimbridge.
So that should be, is eleven thirty five or should it be eleven thirty eight? And that could just be a typo, you know, just looks the wrong line. And you said this does not equal this. This is now fifteen.
All to order, the Fountain County Council meeting for G fourteen twenty twenty one. Everyone had a chance to look over your minutes from the May meeting. Any additions or corrections for those? Hearing that, is there a motion to approve? Dale second. Favor? All those in favor? Review and acknowledge the treasurer's bank reconciliation and monthly comparison. For funds, is there a motion to acknowledge those? Dale second. General Lee, all those in favor? Seven oh. Okay, transfer funds seated. Request to transfer three hundred dollars from website to economic development to cover an invoice from Warren County Local Economic Development Organization. Is there a motion to approve that? Tom second. Dale, all those in favor? Transfer funds, county general auditor, transfer one thousand from postage to computer maintenance. Is there a motion to approve that transfer? General Lee? Second. Kelly is second. All those in favor? Seven oh. Ambulance COVID nineteen, Garth is on security. Requesting paper for Clorox anti-vaccinure wipes. Now the three hundred fifty eight dollars and eighty cents out of the Chair's Act money. Questioners of voters to approve that payment. So is there a motion to council to approve? Dale, all those in favor? Second. General Lee? Yeah, all those in favor? Seven oh. Chair's Act, request to transfer funds. Got a check in the amount of twenty three thousand five hundred twenty six dollars and thirty six cents. Chair's money that positive into COVID nineteen overtime, over part of the cost of overtime on the clinic. Amount of thirty five thousand two hundred eighty seven dollars seventy seven cents. And Warren County shares eleven thousand seven hundred sixty one forty one, and they have proof to pay that.
Most of it. There's some in the bill and the second quarter that.
Okay.
This quarter has been filled.
Okay.
And that money.
Is there a motion to approve that? General Lee, Tom second. All those in favor? Transfer, no actually, it's about, wait a minute, it's six sixty five, not.
Six sixty five, not transfer.
Okay, so it's sixteen eighty six is?
Yes.
Okay. Transfer sixteen eighty six from COVID nineteen to COVID nineteen part-time circuit court. Is there a motion to approve that transfer? General Lee, Tom, second. All those in favor? Okay, this one is, what's the name? Yes. Plan adjustment. Six hundred sixty five dollars from COVID nineteen to COVID nineteen circuit court. Is there a motion to allow a claim adjustment? General Lee, second. Dale, all those in favor? Seven oh. Transfer request from motor vehicle highway from lease one, three hundred fifty seven dollars twenty cents to lease three. Ninety six dollars seventy eight cents from hardware to lease three. Fifty seven dollars thirty eight cents from utilities to lease subscriptions. Is there a motion to allow that transfer? Tom, Dale, second. All those in favor? Seven oh. Transfer request, county hearing free community from prevention to screens and treatments of five hundred dollars. Is there a motion? Okay, is there a motion to allow that transfer? General Lee, second. Dale, all those in favor? Okay, additional appropriations. Public hearing is now open for additional appropriations for public comment. If anyone wants to make a comment about additional appropriations. Resolution twenty twenty one dash fifteen, county general ambulance for equipment repair. Requesting additional to maintain the equipment. It's been all the twenty twenty one budget. Is there a motion to approve the additional appropriation of ten thousand? General Lee, second. Tom, all those in favor? County general plan commission. Ten thousand consulting fees and building. Requesting additional cover legal fees incurred by future solar project. The commission stated legal fees will be reimbursed by the solar company. And then you've got to address that, right?
Yeah, somebody's got to. Standing on that, I mean, it's a bad look for someone, a person, or something that maybe we should be taking care of ourselves. I don't know what's going on with it.
I knew that their lawyers, their company, bringing power to us. That was a condition as, and they didn't say that they would be reimbursing that minutes firm for any additional time. You know, working to make sure that what is in ours of any ordinance is what we're all agreed on, so that they can afford what.
So is this a solar company's deal?
Their team is going to be reimbursing that minutes firm or any work that Kent is having to do just on solar. And they are tracking all that time.
My issue isn't with the solar company. My issue is with the company's payers. That may be our responsibility.
He's got to be reimbursing that net. That is, that is what they do. I don't know if you have your information on that.
So then why are we doing an additional for ten thousand if they're going to pay that net?
Well, because what I think, I don't think the ten percent, I don't think a lot of the ten thousands were just solar because their house in some additional hydrants that are paying regarding those zoning ordinance. It's not just solar, but those costs, they only budgeted three thousand maybe. And it's never been. And so that is why they put ten thousand because the unknown, if they knowledge in or something that's wanting to go in, you know, we have that legal counsel. And I think that is pretty important.
Being reimbursed by the solar company here, that's bad.
So, so I'd say we're not being reimbursed by this. Is that correct to say?
When you get bills, you're not. Are you paying that whole bill? I guess that's fine. Okay.
Yes.
So then, yes, they would be reimbursing because it's not really our cost to install.
And it shouldn't be bill, I guess, in my opinion.
I don't know that he's going to be billing that solar company directly, that really. No documents have been signed, you know, agreements between us. Invisible. They have signed a contract with the solar farm, you know, getting their property. But I think there's some other things that they want to make sure that our zoning ordinance is compliant with everything that we're needing to do. So you're just uncomfortable for less paying for the bills and then get reimbursed.
Here's the thing, it's numbers. It's too small to do. Or.
Well, can I think it passed?
I don't know how to explain it.
I understand your concern. And I don't know that it's not uncommon, you know, to do that. We reimbursed for various things of whether it's insurance, you sell something. We reimbursed, determined that it was paid out of the first.
This is the floor company most, sort of, popular. And so they want to.
Then they are willing to pay those additional things needed to.
We're meeting the public here and I'm just so far. On Thursday, there'll be a public hearing on that, that is doing ordinance.
Was it Monday, Wednesday?
It's Thursday.
Six o'clock.
Thursday, you're assist.
I think it's Thursday. And then depending on their vote, it will not be presented to the commissioners. Very interesting. On Thursday. And I think that's the public size. And that's, that's an issue. Who do they have favor?
Don't I? Really? The state left it up to the county, right? To decide the situation, the mill, windmill, plus the solar, correct? They didn't really make a ruling for the separate county. That's what I understand it. And so therefore, did that get to the planning commission?
It's the way, it's being amended Thursday, six o'clock, they're having a public hearing. Let's see, when we did the zoning ordinance last year, we amended it and we included solar under agricultural, solar farming, under agricultural as an acceptable. Now, the guidelines on the windmills. There are some things in place, and I wish Kent was here to, you know, span on that. To protect the neighbors, the other citizens, so that if they want to sell their house and then they're not going to get the price that they wanted, and if it was over here in this area, it's a protection for them. The windmill's going to have to kick in. So if you read your zoning ordinance, you have it, opportunity to know for you.
Was there a comment, was there a comment made to the commissioners about the solar and windmill? Like, would it be an advantage for Fountain County to have a solar? Or something like that? Seemed like somewhere I read that comment, I could be.
No, because I think that's the misunderstanding. When you're doing the solar farm, you have a property, so you don't know on the farm that you put the solar farm on there. Now you're barely seeing it. So that's when we think that is personal property. The same. So you're going to give the rent of the land from the farm plus the personal property.
So, you know, Jeff, the guy that was head of that soul, was in your last commission meeting and had indicated and told our commissioners that they would be doing some, some work in county. And. And so that ten thousand dollar fee, they paying us just to come in? Then, or we have to pay them to get it started? And then they're going to reimburse the county and reimburse whoever.
Well, I think they've been reaching out to Kent, the net firm. And so Kent has been, I don't know what he's doing, phone calls whenever times. Redoing the zoning ordinance and stuff and, yeah, Jim, I guess, maybe that should be our deal. But, you know, their firm is willing to, you know, reimburse us. And I think they do that for all their clients.
I'm, I'm going to suggest, put out there, we just, if we need to leave where it's basically put that in the line. Why not for legal fees and then expect reimbursement because of what it seems, it's one of the things that it looks like. I mean, we can't play both sides. We can't. I, I think it puts a burden on the planning, everybody else, they pay for the book.
And it's the, I mean, I think.
You got, you got the bad guys paying us to. I'm seeing a lot of them. But the orders are on two sides. There's good side and bad side.
To the council, we are having some extra castle needs, well, the commission is what we have in mind because we really haven't been doing anything. And we are doing some things now. And I know last year, we had an ask for a subdivision. So, and I think while they were asking for additional, they wanted to get a fee that they're supposed to not ask for capital gain or another additional. I can't.
What I don't understand about this is, he has permission to negotiate on our cap or returning.
Well, I see, so, man.
Colleen said we're a thousand dollars in the red, that the attorney suggested that we request ten because there are more.
That's always been, that's always been. I'll make the motion that we approve this for the reason we're talking about here now, for the solar farm right now. Add to the planning commission fees, and we don't mention anything about the reimbursement at this time. But we've got to take our interest without any string attached to one of the five.
So, second. Lee, all those in favor? Okay, county general jail. We've already approved four jailers. We'll do, we've got to do a salary ordinance to, other things, so. I'll do that after yet. So we have overtime five thousand, four jailers, eighty nine thousand six hundred and two. Is there a motion to approve additional appropriations in the amount of ninety four thousand six hundred and two dollars? Dale, second. Tom, all those in favor? Seven oh. County general coroner on call, four thousand. Loxalogy, two thousand. Methoxy expense, ten thousand, body transport, two thousand. It's a total of fifteen thousand. Is there a motion to? Already marked out the ninety four, sorry.
I got very low to that taste.
So is there a motion to approve the fifteen thousand for coroner, Kelly? Motion, second. All those in favor? Seven oh. All right, let's just go ahead and do the salary ordinance while we're at it. So with the four jailers, we had to add the, change the amendments salary ordinance for those four jailers, eighty nine thousand six hundred and two dollars. We also, in the last month or the month before, increased the part-time on the assessor's office to fourteen dollars an hour. And then also the salary of the sheriff. Remember, it's set by the state and it runs from July first to June thirty. So we had to raise the additional amount for the, for the state, raise the sheriff's salary from July first to December thirty first, so. Is there a motion to, oh, you have one here. Okay. So sheriff's salary amended to seventy nine thousand, I hear, seventy five dollars. But also the part-time assessors, fourteen an hour. Oh, they didn't have a sign, okay. So is there a motion to amend the twenty twenty one salary ordinance? Dale. Motion, second, Dale. All those in favor? Here's a copy for everyone who wants to have the, the salary ordinance.
I have a question on the four jailers. The major lady said something about getting the jailers from remaining county to come up here.
He did tell me that they are going to have one or two of them, I think, up here when they start their construction. But we can't pay them or we're responsible for their insurance.
Why don't they have to be worked out then? They're going to pay us what the.
Well, they did. No, no, they still aren't going to pay us wherever there's an emergency ratings. Even if that's just sitting down there doing nothing, and they're there, they're going to lie and come up here saying they help us, but it's not, they're not going to get into the scam on that, what they're going to pay for. Is that answer your question? Okay, county general commissioners. Rusty, I think there's a lot of questions, so I'll, I'll up here.
I know.
So. County general commissioners, capital outlay, they're requesting nine hundred forty one thousand four hundred and four dollars. Hundred forty thousand sixty for tire, I think it's a tire roller, double drum roller, hundred twenty five thousand four hundred and fifty. A roller, hundred forty two thousand. Two hot boxes, four ten, and forty three thousand four hundred and twenty each, and a bigger former, forty seven thousand fifty four.
So the estimate is about gotten, and the charge from different government years.
Okay, first off, before we start, I talked to Sharon Nagel and Bill Woods about the license plates. And you were superintendent before, that probably was the rule, the truck warning. They changed it a few years ago, that every license plate sold in the county goes to the county. Divide the total tax by the total number of vehicles sold, times your number of piles of roads. So we do get money from every, like you have, vehicle, truck included.
So then that's, same time, then the, I've been being so, F F C F, actors.
You didn't tell me that. You didn't tell me that. You assured that you are getting paper on your return. Appreciate that. Hey, open up, anybody have questions on this?
I, I have a couple of questions, okay? You know, one, why wasn't any of this discussed last August when we did budget hearings?
Last August, we didn't have a road greater program, we didn't have a pad of winter. We didn't know we were going to be tore up as we are now. And I did not know the total amount of equipment that was available in the highway department during budget. I'd just been there a few months, and I hadn't had a chance to check any. All this came to me during the last few months. When we went out and reached out to the road greater program, from the action rollers and what have you. We had people loan this stuff that we thought we could buy with Kent. Based on the fact that the roller, the pad foot roller, is a spike. You can't cross a highway, you can't cross a bridge with it. The pad foot roller that we have, we can cross highways and lanes that we are requesting. That was a difference. We used what was loaned to us on Rain Ben Road, for example. That road turned out perfect. But we couldn't cross an oil shop, we couldn't cross another major highway. We have eleven miles right there in that road group program. The shows we need, vibrating roller. We can use both the tire roller, the dual drum, and the vibrator on these roads. At the time, I thought everything we had worked. I didn't realize how old it was and how outdated it was. So that's, that was the way in which we kind of requested, get this stuff updated and.
The other thing is, sheriff's department, let's give me the list of all vehicles, their years, their mileage. We haven't received anything in the equipment, the highway, we'd like to have an updated list.
I would be under asset. Or room asset, equipment asset.
I'm sure we have that.
Yes, and I can hit a land of what, what's going to be done, repairs. Okay, so these things need the rollers for, why didn't we apply for community crossing grant money?
We did.
Well, Attic just got approved for two hundred and forty three thousand, coming to the hundred thirty six thousand. For many county, a million dollars, Warren County five hundred sixty one thousand, not county gets zero.
Yeah, we got four hundred and sixty.
Email I got shows, not county zero.
We have four hundred and ten thousand.
We have four-hundred-and-seven thousand.
Yep.
They're doing seven-fifty and three-hundred.
Seven-fifty, three, yeah, seven-fifty trial, no, no, so what's the total? Because I gotta look at that crossing.
Four-hundred and thirty.
Finalized the first year. Is that the most date updated?
Yeah, we just got it, yeah.
I know they have County, County wasn't on it.
Yeah.
County wasn't on it, but we did get, I mean, we did take the working anything for USI and stuff. Well, I know there's more than one round.
It's another list, and that's because of this month, there's a lot.
Right. Yeah, there's no one coming back if we're going out of the funds. So I don't know what you want.
This is the one that we just got the email on, and it shows County's zero.
I've got it, we're just going through the community crosses. I also got the bid. So you should, it should be on your list.
Milestone, are they doing, paving?
It was the, the paving and chips, it was on the account that they had to do it.
So why are we, what's the paper for then?
The paper is that we, that we do it. We do our own set size and what have you with the financing we have. What we have now is paper that is operated on decent fuel and what have you. It's outdated, it takes five to six people to run it, you gotta have two on the screws on each side, and one that's gonna do the poke, one guy driving, and two to walk along the side, okay? The new paper is electronic, laser-guided, one-man operation, heated sides, you don't have maintenance. We were updating the paper, that's what we did. We've been through buying junk papers and what have you in the past. But suggested to me by the operators, they do the work, that it should be nice to have that. And when they did the veteran's streets, we looked at the papers that we probably had, that milestone has and everything. And if you go on the project right now, you won't see twenty and thirty-year-olds, it seems like we have, doing the work that we do the same as. So that was one of the reasons with the manpower and what have you. Our decision was to ask for it now, and try to get it ready, and try to be prepared. And if we did get grant money or what have you, we don't have to spend two months trying to get a machine ready to go out and do the job all right, it's sitting there ready to go. So that was the purpose behind adding the paper. Can we get by without paper? Yeah, it's just gonna cost you more money at some point, it'll be more money whoever. But then availability is getting scarce. These things were set at the time I made the request, and that's what I did.
Well, I'm wondering about why I'm searching for lease options, because that's what we need for doing our.
Because my lease program right now is max, and my budget, I'm sure, is gonna be close to not even being able to take care of what we do have. And until I know what the state's projection is, it's hard to figure these things. So that's why I asked directly, if, if we can do this, and everything is sitting there ready, you know, by the time we call. We don't have seconds, yes, we don't have the work, we're ready. And that was the main purpose of doing that. Hot boxes, for example, one is dangerous to light, the other one is closed, we can light it, can use it. These are solar powered, there's no extra fuel or power, they're solar powered. They run on solar energy, they have their own heaters. We can use those, put up into the coal plant, and then when we use the coal pipes in the winter, we can even heat it some. We're so far behind in, on the hot oils and what have you, it's concerning. Also, we can use these pipe rollers with that program. When we dig a pipe out, this box will hold four, four ton, you can drop the whole four ton in the ditch. Paint it right then and there with that hot box. That was a reason, too. One, the north one, south, but right now, what you're gonna run right back to back, trying to get all these roofs pulled up in this bad environment.
Can I reject your, uh, question about why you didn't lease? There was no additional funds in N D H for him to do that. I think that's why he's here today, to try and get funds from County General. Because of all the years that the highways have been reimbursed in the county for all the times, they didn't want to work that much, or if you have to do it back, you know, three-hundred-and-forty thousand, you have to be there for the county, how would N D H essentially try itself? And not getting the visitors in, you know, to like. But I, I think we're gonna have to think outside of ours, and hope I don't want to be a partner right now, or some of these other funds, whether it be County General. Or what it right now is, that's what we're looking at.
Well, good people, we just gave the highway department seven-hundred thousand dollars, now another, another one, another almost a million dollars. We gotta keep a million dollars back for the landfill, and I'm told we're gonna have some more work to do down out there. You know, we put out seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars in additionals for great gives. That was also County Highway and other ambulance and you know, for law enforcement or that.
I understand that, because lawnmower equipment is older, and so now, it just seems like right now, we'll have to replace all of it at the same time. Whether it's sheriff's department, the ambulance, highway department, they all work together, we got nine-one-one. I know we got issues even with their department, so. Yes, we found ways, ways, you know, ones I, so I think the risk is in the heat, so that we're not getting the phone calls, that roads aren't getting bad.
And, and I can, the other thing is, if you're knowing, we've got two thirteen-year-old road graders that we're trying to get in next year to cut it under a lease program. I mean, you got dump trucks, we've had ordered for a year, if you approve that, which you were talking about funding. We still, it's been, we can't get the funding. It's not gonna get any easier to get this equipment, it really isn't. I mean, that's, and, and really and truly, this stuff's been needed for years, and it's just, I'm the only one that's still left, so let's, let's get it maybe. I don't know, maybe others have, I, I don't know. I'm just saying, when they ask me to do something, I went out, and I, this is what I come out and, I, I worked with Travis, I've been there thirty years, all the other guys. This is on a list of stuff that they can say they need to do, the job you wanted to do. The biggest factor I have is public safety. And that was the reason for the road grader school, which is now implemented in White County. Today, they're in Park County, putting that program into effect. And Wednesday and Thursday, they'll be in Montgomery County with that road grader program. And I will have two men there, taking the training, updating. You want ride roads, you want this done, that done, what have you. I'm also working with Purdue on their new program, where there's ninety percent funding, and we pay ten percent. And have to try to take some of these old concrete hazards out, gravel roads, that are about a foot of haul, but when you hit them, it's just an automatic car, and, and wire the roads at the same time. So there's just a whole lot of stuff coming to fail. If we don't have equipment to do it, we, something is harder to do.
N D H's, since lease, you think we're pretty well banked on all our leases?
My budget, yeah, as I, and, and I have no idea what my projecting is. Normally, before a budget fills out, state sends you your projected rate. I don't have it. But I was supposed to have a budget in by the fifteenth, or whatever it is. So it's kind of hard to do that when you don't know what the state projects you to have.
So there's lease one, there's lease three, hardware, lease utilities, but up here, lease one to lease three, what is?
Well, that was on, on his leases, he just didn't have enough.
That's what I thought.
To pay him, and so he's just, he's, he's not asking, this is not an additional request, it's just transferring. He's transferring them from, from like hardware, he didn't spend it all, just to be able to make it zero.
But what I'm saying, what he's doing is, you're going pretty tight on leases.
Yes.
Now, that's the money, that's what you're talking about, and that's what I was looking at, at top figures. You gotta pay.
Yeah. But, well, that helps him. This is stuff that should have been done years and years, updated every, so often. Just like training tractors every five years, training combine every five. You gotta do the same thing with your highway, but yet, the highway budget in the last four years is off six-point-two million dollars. Why? Why have they gone six-point-two million? And I think we all know the answer, that's why I'm here, asking for additional appropriation to get it there. So.
I don't know, maybe there's lease of three months, or about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
Maybe just pull that over.
And you haven't checked to see what it costs to lease a paper?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
That is an option.
Because that's an option, I mean, we're, we're taking money out of County General.
Can we lease it out of County General? I think that, that's his concern, he doesn't have the funds in N D H to do this out of there. So we can't do lease it, and maybe instead of doing additional appropriation of nine-hundred and some thousand, you can drop down some. So drive off the paper, the full amount, outright buying it, and just put a lease in there. I think that's his question. I mean, that is the problem.
And I'm more inclined to vote for that than, than vote for another a million dollars.
Rusty was the figure for the lease or a paper?
I didn't write it, it's eight-seven thousand a year.
Okay, so.
Five-year lease.
Scratch off the paper, that'd be seven thousand. And that would be his additional preparation.
Or, or.
Are you wanting to lease another?
No, I.
No, I'm asking counsel, are, are you thinking of renting another one of the hot boxes or whatever?
Uh, that would be, any, I, I don't have the figures to lease them. Take out, and, and, right now, I can't vote for a million dollars out of County General, personally. I'd like to see lease figures where that costs as much.
Okay, so instead of four-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, then for, you would ask to lease eighty-six thousand?
I, uh, I don't have a problem with the four-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, but the others, I, I mean, I'd be leased to them.
I would reduce it three-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand and fifty-four dollars. The outright bought everything else, and then just eighty-six thousand dollar lease for the paper, so instead of the nine-hundred and.
I'd just simply leave the paper out, you know, I can, but.
You leave it out altogether?
Yes, and, and go with the, you do the two hot boxes and the three rollers.
How many rollers do you have now?
We have, uh, two, three, we have three.
We're gonna have six rollers.
Pardon?
We're gonna have six rollers?
No, we would sell, we'd love it. You're not gonna get any of the freight in. I have a sealed bid for the shredder, the old jet box, and something else, we advertise and sell.
So your rollers are out, so we, because you can't.
Right, vibrators don't work in them, so you add no vibrators, and you're practicing these vibrators.
And the hot boxes, I understand, are dangerous.
Yeah, one that's just totally you can't use, and the other one we can, but you can double mine. I'll let you double mine.
I heard about that.
I mean, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm trying to protect these guys. If you get parked, that's the biggest problem right now, you can't get parked for anything. I mean, it's, it's frustrating, that's what it is, frustrating, and then I give answers, but. I'm just trying to get this updated, or we can do something, and do it right.
What's the bill of billing? For leasing?
Who cares?
No, for leasing.
Both leasing. If I order that paper today, the lease program, we may get it a year from now. That's why I say, let me look at my budget, County General, what's projected. If I can fit it on the lease, let me, let me do it, paper on high side. I can get by without paper. But I'm telling you, you need those two hot boxes and rollers, yeah. Rollers, we need, we need to drive that program, and any other chips in on the block company.
Hey, Tom, I know a lot worked on State Highway. I know what exactly, Rusty, the hot boxes are very, very difficult. They will ignite itself, you put four tons of paint in, coal paint, it will get incredibly hot, it's like you're putting it out, like. The, those are very difficult. I know there's a lot of lease options, that's impossible.
It was taken. You know, I don't wanna fire anyone, you know. That's all, I just, I just understood, heard that that was a dangerous piece of it, like, you got guys working on it, you know.
I, it, it was like the chip box, grab us a foot of sand, and then get everybody going. We lose the hands that go over the counter. You guys replace that, but it's on lease. Tell them to, my leases are.
They live combined, the top four items, leases of three hundred, five eighty, three fifty, five hundred and eighty.
Except that, you just said it'll be a year before it gets papered, so we can do that in August for the, oh, your budget?
That's why I.
Just do those top fours, four ninety-four, three fifty.
Yeah, it's one.
I, I have a question, did we ever approve the greater program in this county? The work that's been started on the gravel roads, has it been a, have we?
Building program, but we didn't have the equipment. We didn't know that we didn't have all the equipment.
We started the program, but we don't have the equipment to even come close.
He's borrowing.
So, so the, so the rooms that you pushed back are, you know, in a windmill. You're gonna have to get, get them back now?
I, I can, but I need compaction, why put them back over if I don't have some way to compact them?
I did, I've seen you brought some back.
Some. But they're not compacting, so they're not gonna hold.
I feel like we've started a program ahead of, we've put the cart before the horse here, and I am I'm a little upset about it, because I think it's dangerous what's laying out there for people. You know, I've had farmers ask me, is the county gonna come and mow my roadsides? Because I don't, I don't wanna do it. I had another farmer say, I'm throwing rocks as I mow. It's gonna create a false bottom if the semi parks in that ditch to load. It's, it's dangerous, and I feel like we put the cart before the horse. Now we've started the program, now, oh, we need this equipment, and I'm gonna need five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars now. I cannot vote for this. I am out. I can't do it.
And I was very upset, and Mr. Tom, knowing that we didn't have the proper equipment, I mean, obviously, for myself, I didn't know that we didn't have all the equipment, and, and we based on a lot of the equipment. It wasn't even the right type of roller, and so Rusty's borrowing, and that really wasn't the right thing. So yes, we should, we should have had the equipment. Unfortunately, we had nothing in N D H, even go after, so. So, yes, we should, we should have had the equipment, unfortunately, we had nothing in, in the H, even go after, so, yeah, I, I agree, I mean, it's frustrating.
It's, it's, it's really hard, because like, like, it's, it's almost two million dollars if you want to sit down and calculate what we appropriated in the first six months of this year, including this.
It only belongs to that, you know, we do have resolution, and we have interviews, or we drive away, and everything, which is something that we talked about some time. And unfortunately, you know, we have these farmers that are farming out to almost the edge of the road, and we don't have the proper width of the road right now, so it's, it's all enough throughout the county. Um, and I think Rusty has taken that challenge to, with his part, to try and fix what he can, but he can't get it all done, you know, in a month. You know, I think that's where our frustration is, we think we should get things done this week or next week, and it's gonna take some time, patience.
And, and I've explained that to people, but they, they just don't see it.
School bus safety was number one on road width, farmer width, uh, equipment was number two. Uh, all this stuff comes from Purdue University, not out of my back pocket, not out of my head. This is Purdue University, brought the man in from Nebraska. Go to Nebraska, there's gravel on their roads all year long, there are cattle trucks driving down their roads all year long. You've got a thirty-foot road to drive, not a twelve-foot with a pile of rock. That's our difference, and our guys were trained, they were eager to go try it, half of them went out ahead of time and tried to get all our roads cut, which was a big mistake, that was my fault. I'll thank you for the possibility of that, and I've taken many a phone call for that. Now, why put that gravel back when I showed you guys the little two-point-three-ounce ball and the five-pound can? There's millions of dollars laying here in county roads I'm trying to recover. It's been there for fifty-five, sixty years, and we've gotta get it out of those ditches. Why go pay any barrier or, or approach to get gravel when it's right there? Well, we've got it out, now we know where they put it, and they're waiting, pack it, and they're waiting, take care of it. Didn't have it right away where we could put a green flag out here saying, here's our forty-foot Easter. Technically, that's my responsibility, well, not the farmer. I've got three moving tractors, we're running day and night, because we're trying to get caught out. I'm sorry you can't support it, I'm trying to do the best, so if you harvest grain, you can pull over in that ditch and not sink in. You can be off the roadway when the school bus comes by, you can meet another someone so you don't knock the mirror off. That's the whole purpose, getting your box covered, taking out so we can have, why don't you do it? That's the program, and I'm sorry you feel that way.
I just, I, I have a responsibility to the taxpayers, and if we, if I vote for this, and they see how much has been spent, they're gonna come down on me, and I have a responsibility to them as well as, as well as you.
I understand, I, and I don't have a problem with your feeling on that.
You know, I.
Can you get this stuff out in person?
I hope, that's all I can say. I hope, due to, I know, and, uh, pneumatic roller and the, uh, the only thing I'm having a problem right now with is the vibrators.
I see.
I mean, I can get a great victim, but I don't want a great thing, that's, that's, that's. Uh, we're still checking, we don't know, uh, the pneumatic and the big double ground I can have, we've got two. We got one on the chair, and the hot boxes, I can say that right now.
So, they're still using, I'm sure, more work.
Yeah, but, yeah, but, but, and we're not gonna quit, I mean, we, we still have, but we're, we're, we borrow.
Right.
So, it's, it's a lot.
So, you, you've already started the program, and, and you've cut the roads, but the roads are not compacting.
Right.
And you're, you're borrowing equipment.
Yes.
And I think I asked you another maybe commission, or a council meeting, are you going to have to pay this back from this borrowing equipment? Are you gonna give us some kind of money?
No.
Anything like that? Then, then what would happen if, if you had a piece of equipment to finish up, finish up what you got right now? To finish what you got so that it's safe where people travel now? Not saying you can't do these other roads in the future, but worrying right now that we could finish this up and get some equipment so it doesn't cost us a million dollars all at once? Is that possible? Is that worth a waste then if we do that?
We've already got the path, I've agreed to track the work, do that, but what, what's left is necessary to do that.
What, what with the farmers on this business road? Where, where are, I saw.
We're a long way up. I've got a twelve-foot road with eight rows of corn down one side, and eight rows of beans on the other side, Jim Lee saw that one. We went to major. I mean. If you think it's frustrating sitting here trying to decide whether to spend a million dollars or what have you, you ought to be on my side trying to get the million, and the phone calls from the people that are picked off because they can't pass on the road, or they can't pull over to the side because they got a pile of rock there, or they can't vote. My suggestion was, go back like Greg, go get a batch though, and walk, but I didn't go get that through. I didn't go very good either, but the answer is, do you want roads or don't you? Land and set, if you want roads, we can build it, if you don't want them, I'll go back the old way and just draw the time, and I can care less.
How many miles have you got in right now?
How many?
How many on the gravel, how many miles have you done so far?
About all of them, and over four hundred and some miles, got a pile of gravel sitting next to them, and ready to use them. Now, we're gonna have to pull that back and, and wipe our face and say, sorry folks, we made a big mess, because we can't finish them, we don't have the equipment to do it. And like I said, no matter to me, when they made an agreement with me, I don't have a problem with it. I'm just trying to get this county updated, just like you would if you've got another piece of equipment. Thirty-two-six is the inside, or thirty-point-six is the inside dual of a comp. On a nine-foot road, or a twelve-foot road. I mean, it's there, you got a little box cord that can only hold three tons, they've got to be out. I'm working with Purdue on that program, I'm working with anybody on any program, but you guys are gonna have to contribute to the program. I can't deal by myself with what I got. And it was over prior to M V H, it's been cut in half, back before, it would have been a million some dollars when he beat it. But now I've got to jump through hoops and dot eyes across keys to get my money back, which is gas money, they can put in the pot so we can all grow, that's called community process. Ripped you off luckily, you know who's getting that money? Big boys. I'm just saying, so, I, whatever you want to do, you know, I understand. I can't, I can't do anymore, so.
Uh, in the commissioners meeting, uh, that attended last time, I think that the lawyer that was there, uh, did they discuss about the farmers? I mean, how are we getting to the point where the farmers are overextended planting in the county rideaway? How, how, how are you going about working with the farmers?
I'm not doing anything to them.
Are you just taking that, are you just taking that space?
No.
We haven't done anything yet.
We haven't done anything yet, they're gonna have one reading on the rideaway.
So, that cutting that you're talking about, Kelly, that people are upset about, they're mowing, they're throwing rocks everywhere, probably tearing up some of their machinery, but yet, they're on, they don't know if they're on county property or on their property.
Well, they're just, they're mowing the ditches.
They're just doing what they've done for years.
Years.
And, and that's the thing, and that's my question, and didn't, uh, didn't one of the, uh, our lawyers, did he say, did he give, give you the, or they were writing up a situation where they were gonna give you the legality to go do that? Do you understand what I'm saying?
He said we have in the county rideaway, when we first brought this program up, and I said, no, I wanted it right, which he did. In fact, the first reason, we're waiting on him to finish it. I, I'm not gonna go do, cut a man's corn down, I'm not gonna cut his beans up, but the guys that went before things were planted, got, that's what they're upset about. They always pile the gravel, there is stuff right there, and we haven't pulled it back, we haven't cut ditches, we haven't done any of that part of this program. But, what we have done and checked on, it works. Good drainage, inch of rain, we were road grating the day after an inch of rain, and it worked, right? Drainage is your plan back, so when you get a thirty-foot road, I put it on each side with the ditch, proper, uh, preparation, then you've got a solid road, next spring, you won't have as many of the problems that we had this year. Keep the road graders and the piles up, don't throw the gravel back out. Packing with fifty threes, which is way better than the dirt burn the two-foot on roads for years, and once it's compacted and locked up, that road will last a lot, but, kind of back up on the road, and packing the makeup route there, so that you can seal it and have it ready.
Where's the gravel, where's the gravel coming from your second year after you've compacted? You see that it's kind of needs some maintenance? What have you, what have you done?
You won't need the maintenance you've got now, keep piles from throwing it out the fields, that was the whole thing, isn't it? All done and done.
I just happened to see a little brief one, and ask you about, I said, I said that definitely about, I was at the jail, went down that gravel road, because you were talking about, and I saw the cut.
Right.
And I understand what Kelly's talking about, because you've got a pile of gravel there on that cut, and, uh, what you need is, you need to, you need to straighten it up. And, uh, what you're talking about, you don't have that equipment to do that.
I haven't gotten sealed, have you been down lately? It's got ditches, it's not got a pile of gravel.
And you've done that the last week, or whenever, you know, the last week?
Three weeks ago, yeah. I road graded, been sealed, and done, if I'm gonna do it, I have the equipment to do it, it's not gonna do it, so it's sensitive. So, when people secure time like I have and money and material to do it.
So, you've got close to all the roads and you've got it there?
Very much. The last two weeks, I've just been pulling it back, it's been about a quarter, it'll be the same way, and they don't believe it. And that's, that's you guys' fault, I mean, you don't want it done the way that we're doing this, bad program, I don't have a problem.
You're saying we're halfway there, and we just need things?
I'm just saying, if you wanted that, we're gonna need that to cook.
Are we, are we halfway there?
We've got a ditching machine, I mean, it's just so many things that we, like she said, we kind of burnt the horse, but everybody had the training, and when people wouldn't see how it worked, because they were impressed with the way it worked, we just hadn't had the follow. And I'll take responsibility, but I basically turned the lease to go exercise our programs. I took all the two hundred and seventy-seven phone calls, rotated them into county, I don't have a problem with that, because at some point, when those roads are finished, then we may be proud of people on this road.
Tom, you know, we started out, they just, now started, that's what it is. We didn't realize that was gonna, that's what, uh, maybe we should concentrate on these few, this district here, just do a few roads and get them away. There's a possibility, and so trial and error, and, you know, we've got phone calls, we've written, so we're trying to back us.
I agree, I appreciate your first criticism, I know what is even, I'll make a decent improvement, but these gravel roads aren't gonna survive if you don't do something to it. They're not, they're sliced, but they're quick, it's all from, oh, bagging, to a grain, the greatest, that whole world is semized, and if you look at it, they're not gonna, so, exactly, so. You might have got a park over horse, that's probably what we're gonna do, but you, I think you gotta make the board head, and try and get the gravel road straightened out so we can drive.
And, and that's a very good point, based on school bus safety.
It's school bus, absolutely.
Semize meaning, when you harvest, just basically pull up on the grass and, and fill, sometimes, something can't get around you, sometimes it can.
But if they're like the way they are now, it's just material.
Well, since five years ago, we'll be able to drive out another apartment, check it in the other county. Thank you, you're right, absolutely.
I'm over the gap over the flowers, we've got to address it somehow.
Right. And I don't have a problem with that.
You're stuck here and put someplace, what shouldn't have stuck, getting ahead of yourself, ruining the roads, and not that.
Each guy did an individual task, if you had eight road graders going down that same road with trucks following, water in between them, packing, and trucks following, putting gravel on you, but that, an issue at all, we didn't have it. They wanted to do there, they had learned something they hadn't had in twenty years, and they liked it, what they saw, because they were actually getting rock out of the, out of the ditches. The thing was to take it from one side, but there were three or four rains hit it, take it back to the other side, and then you wipe that side, and then you saw it.
So, what's your timetable for any of these, for?
I'm trying to get them all closed up now, because I, I basically threw my hands up, because if I don't have the equipment to do it, I'm like a mess.
So, you're saying, you're giving, you are being pulled back a little bit?
Yeah, we've done work on those, you're gonna have a lot of sod in it, in that one, so.
What do you, what do you propose down there, generally, what do you propose down on that leasing deal?
I presented the total, buy the first four items there, it was four hundred and ninety-four thousand, if you add a lease on that, it comes to five eighty, I believe. So, I, I mean, that's the paper, I don't know, I'm talking about gravel right now.
Yeah, the paper, I think that's.
We could, we could buy the four items, the, the rollers and the two hot boxes, so we can patch the blacktops for four ninety-four, three fifty.
I know, it's commissioner.
That moves to four, and we're, and everybody drives on the roads, we're gonna benefit everybody, I'm just, I remember.
I think in the future, though, projects shouldn't be started until.
Yeah.
We have equipment and you've discussed it with us.
Who knew what we were gonna be with the program, other than when we two-day training, you understand? I learned a lot, they learned a lot, and you're absolutely correct, and I took the heat for it, it still works, but, it's, it, uh, you either have a program, the next guy comes in, takes my place, and sits down and says, this is what we're doing, here's the equipment, you're running this, you're running that, all six of you road graders are working this, uh, four-ten-hour day, and I don't care what you do, but you've got a program that everybody is on the same page, and it can be done properly, and it will take a long time to do, and if you remember when I explained to you guys, I said, we need to start this June one, and, and, uh, we didn't get started June one, we started April, then we had rains, and you couldn't do nothing with it. It was supposed to work, so let it be sawed out, well, it didn't, it didn't, we tried experimenting on equipment to drag it and get it, roll out it, nothing was working except the sheet. The sheet foot had, it worked, but, but again, the borrowed equipment, the disc is borrowed, everything is borrowed, that we're using. We get this stuff, it'll do it, and like she said, if that, this section, that'll be done this year, we've got the next section next year, you know, but meanwhile. But meanwhile, I've got to go back and correct what's been done. The roads will be a little wider, a little softer. But you'll have a good step back.
Okay, so I think we're ready to do a vote on county general commissioners. Uh capital outlay for the three rollers and two hot boxes. Four hundred and ninety four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Is there a motion to approve that generally? Is there a second?
I will, on one exception, appreciate your explanation. That might answer my question. I think we need the roads. Everybody on the panel. I will second that motion. Please next time. Bring it to, to give this. I hate to lay out a million dollars.
I would say.
We don't know, but I will second that. And I understand Kelly where you come from. And so now with that, we can get these things straightened out.
Try it, yeah.
My other question is, we're going to send two more workers for training to Montgomery County. For.
Road graders.
This road.
Grader.
Training, which brings up the greater blades. I mentioned while ago that our greater blades may not be where they should be. You need new ones, you need more or what? I heard you say something about greater blades while ago.
I was wasting the show. Yeah. Getting no need for great gravel when you get out of four inch snow. Just knock the path, let everybody ride them, so the sun think they're there. Same thing over there, I put sun think it, puts all sand down as quick as. Long as possible. Don't go in after the dirt. You get another hard freeze like you had this past year, you won't have roads next year anymore. We all redo the roads. Because we, there's not road in this county right now that doesn't have a problem. Whether the blacktop gravel they want, not one. And our guys are doing the best they can with what they have. And hopefully if I can get those boxes sent enough, we can get piled asphalt and. You've got to add that as well. You've got to compact that in. And then the winter when we use that coal mix, it's always been better if we have a little heat with it. These two boxes will heat, solar powered, we can heat up coal mix and at least it'll last more than the bank. So that was approved.
I'll take one myself.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Those? Six to one. Okay, cumulative capital development, uh capital outlay requesting thirty two thousand, but we only need seven thousand. We don't have any other bills.
No, but the part of the original twenty five thousand, we dated by a, some kind of information. Ambulance and there's other departments. And so that is cut in half. I think we were having a revenue that um we are getting, so it's more than we got last year. So when the council approved the adopted report budget, we cut all of the capital outlay in half. So the commissioner, who kind of like half twenty five thousand, in case we have something left, just for the um. I'm relying on the air condition going out. Um, other departments, some of them are older and, and we just want to bring it about way more than new additional corporations. It was good. We do kind of outstanding deals. Money that I think is not to be. So.
I, I'd rather wait, we have the policy, see what the bills are so that we don't get blindsided like you did on this. So I would prefer that the, the motion be for the seven thousand and we've got a bill for, for the scanner. Uh, motion for that. And the key, second. Juslin, all those in favor? Uh, cert tax, will tax, uh, there's going to be changes to that. We have to do that ordinance by September first. Be effective. On January first. And then, um, so we got a meeting for that. Also, the legislature, legislature passed, you know, right now, any money left over in our budget from the departments. We moved ten percent in during the day. Uh, legislature allows us to increase that to fifteen percent for twenty one, twenty two, twenty three and twenty four. So um we will have to have a resolution that is, everybody okay with that, raising that to fifteen percent? Having attorneys draw up the resolution to change it from ten to fifteen. Okay with that? Yes. Have that resolution changed. If, and have a big, whether we could use a debate to twenty one through twenty four and have a revert back to ten percent, twenty five. So we don't have to do another resolution in twenty five. Okay. Everybody think? Okay.
I just want to thank Ratsy for being the most famous person in town. Kelly, right now, is that me? No. I have Thursday, I'm going to be closed and taking my staff to conference. And in the process, I could be able to get Brandon or get to get a quote, an estimate to have electric brand in my office. Right now I have two tripping hazards with cords. And a strip over it and people trip over them all the time and it's great to rearrange my office. And so county commissioners approved to have our gifts from the electric and everything from the beginning of that. And it's only for one thousand three hundred and seventy five dollars. Well, probably okay. So, and hopefully that will take place on Thursday. The other thing is voting equipment. I know that we had started the voting queue to fund. As a few years now, two thousand nineteen legislation path that we are going to have to update. Voting equipment to go to voter verifiable paper audit trail. More commonly known as a V V PAT. Not happy about it. It's not supposed to take place until the year twenty twenty nine. However, we are the last county in the state of Indiana using our voting equipment. Which is just the touchscreen, no voter verifiable paper audit trail. Um, another county state moved to go to a V V PAT voting system. And there was an error and they over purchased a hundred machines. The state contacted me a few weeks ago and, and wanted to give us those machines at no cost to the county. And I'm talking a total of three hundred and fifty eight thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars worth of equipment. I spoke with my election board and um we're, they're not happy about going and changing the chief either. Again, we are the last county in the state to use these voting chiefs that we're currently using in twenty twenty. And we decided to go ahead and go with the equipment since the state is providing us with everything. The machines themselves that were over purchased, the total of a hundred and sixty three thousand, five hundred dollars. The supporting equipment came to the three hundred and fifty eight thousand, seven hundred and forty. And then with the discount, the total that the state is going, going to supply us with is two hundred and eighty six thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. So the county, we are receiving new voting equipment for the election next year.
Do you have to take all one hundred of them?
I'm taking sixty, that's all we need.
Definitely no.
I thought, well, sixty is all we need. And there is a proper procedure to do away with the voting equipment that we currently have. We have, we have very little storage. Um, and it does go back to paper ballot. Which I'm not happy about, but we're doing it. We don't really have any other option legislatively. And the problem is, because I would, I would like to bring it out, but the problem that I ran into was paying for our machine. And when it has time to recertification, we do have dominion machine. We are not connected to them. Which is the election integrity. And so I'm confident in our machine, in our county, our election. Or anything like that. However, public perception is, you know, when, when the public is uneducated and there's misinformation out there, then it creates, you know, unrest. And so with our machines, if they were not to be recertified and dominion would pull our rights to our vendor. In order to create our ballot, we would be without. And so my hand is sore, so we have to go with the machine. And so since the state has provided them, we've gone ahead and, and gotten the transaction rolling. So we should be getting new machines here by, probably by the end of the month. And our current vendor, which is GBS, they will come and they will take our old machines and dispose of them. Because you have to go through all the proper procedures too, because not anybody can just have voting equipment. So they will be making all of that take place towards the end of this month.
Did they have anything?
That's a good question. And they will also be providing all of the training. The county and also paying the um contract. Contract that we have. You're right.
Still think we should get more machine. They're real, you're going to break down to why? Did they offer them? Take them? Yeah. I would agree.
Well, I, I did account for, I did get extra. Sixty is more than enough to let me.
So who, who's the manufacturer of the machine?
Hart Intersthetic.
Hart Intersthetic.
And the voting equipment, there's only like five. Voting um companies in the state of Indiana that we owe that. And that are certified in the certification process and everything federally. Like Indiana gets at the very top of election integrity. And so whatever, whatever company we were to go with, we'd be taken care of. That's our option to be counted. You know, over a hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, that's a lot.
Well, that's just that, like, we have now, it's not like a car where you. Use a twenty thing here and then you're out here and you don't even use it. So that's why I didn't want to change machines, because there's nothing wrong with it. Not broke. But that's not what they've ever been told. Well, they can use you, but not at all. In the state of Indiana, our voting systems are not attached to the internet. And they never hook in. And you say you get the first year contract. Read with the vendor, having low rates in the state. It's in low rates. And well, currently, I think our contract is about twenty five thousand dollars a year. Or if the venture does something. I read about thirteen thousand dollars per election.
Can you expect that to be about the same?
I do. Any other questions?
If we take that, well, we have to keep that fun for the voting machines.
Yeah.
But yes, when the, whatever, I don't know what's in there right now. Maybe we can take that act rate, put it in the county general for years. Put vacuum when you need it or maybe cut it in half, but.
Absolutely, because we, and with the anticipation, we did create the anticipation of having to purchase new equipment.
Don't want to do away with it in case. Someday down the road, there are going to be a lot, well, you're saying two hundred and eighty six thousand, so maybe let that. Give me a little bit of that back. County general. Paper. They're there to take the paper. Okay.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
Thank you. When was your con, uh, constitution? Okay. And that's the other thing, I guess they do have something else, thanks Karen. Um, July fifteenth, I am going to be holding a class on the constitution. I am, I am now technically considered a constitution coach because with this whole pandemic era thing and just the things that happened over the past few years. I am seriously concerned for our constitutional rights. And I have, um, I have discovered how uneducated we are. And we don't know our constitution. And if we don't know what our constitution is, then we can't defend it. We can't stand up and government's function, the whole purpose of our government is to protect our right of conscience. To protect our rights. And our rights are being bolded constantly. And if we don't know that, then we can't take that pushback. So I have already taught a ten week course this last winter and I had a minimum of ten people in my class every week in Tennessee. And so I spoke with commissioners when I asked for permission to use the courthouse. And I also spoke with the judge and asked if I could utilize the courtroom to hold classes. And I will be teaching a six week course on the constitution beginning on July fifteenth. From six P M until eight P M. And so I'm going to encourage you all to come. It's just basically an overview, not an in-depth study of the constitution, basically a quick start guide. And just come and learn right alongside of me. Any other questions?
Yeah, pre-registered.
Yes, you can. And there is not fee, it's free. And you can go to patriotacademy.com, click on constitutional coach. And then there will be an option to find a class. And you can find a class, maybe it's out there. And I am also going to try to, not just have it in person, but also to zoom it.
Write that down, give it to Farrell.
Thanks. I will print a label off where you will bring it down. And so, and if you don't have internet access and you're not able to, you can just contact me in my, I don't know, your name or whatever. And I'll put my phone number, Farrell, just my phone number. Because you can, okay, I'll just put your information.
Yes.
Okay? We'll be waiting.
You mind else of anything?
When was the plan commissioned for the hearing?
I don't know, Commander Drew is still on.
Okay. Can anyone hear me?
The, the three, three, four board? Yes. Yeah.
Good morning.
We can hear you.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I uh, I first want to apologize for Brad and Bonnie, whoever's dealing with my chaos this morning of losing signal Zoom and having to come back in nineteen times. Um, but I, I do have a quick update that the council should be aware of in regards to the nine one one dispatch center. Um, it was brought to the commissioners' attention last Monday at our meeting. That they were having some issues with their uh air handler unit. Um, and Rick was working with Scott Williams. Scott had been there last weekend uh to recharge a system and they knew they had some uh failures happening. Unbeknownst to anybody, I believe Wednesday night. Can you guys still hear me?
Okay, you're on.
Hi, everyone. Morning. Okay, I just, I'm afraid everybody can't drive the camera, just know. Um, it was brought to our attention last Monday, our meeting, that the Colorado dispatch center. Uh, they had some issues with their painting unit. Um, Scott, they're there over the weekend, uh, a week, a week ago now. I'm in charge of that system and knew those, there was a problem, failures going on in that system. Um, I mean, I'm sending them up, uh, count on Wednesday night into Thursday morning that the unit went down. Um, their equipment. Their equipment in our I D. room started to get extremely hot and open. And it became somewhat emergency. Scott, they dropped everything he was doing, and he came to the courthouse to try to find the thing. He was able to charge the system, but their stuff, the unit is not working, the charge is not full. Brian wore it to South Eastbound School with generous enough alumni, a couple of four-one-eight units that Scott was able to give us up, I believe Friday morning, to keep it cool in there, D C. credit school. And I talked to Scott a little bit ago, and he's not getting torn up today, and he's not there. He tried to get that situated. He entered the league, he's not very satisfied, and he combined it great, it's not, it'll make the human league system. So I haven't keep everybody updated that, but that is an ongoing scenario that we're in, and I don't matter. I don't want to see the ladies working in there, and the guys that are running, but the I D. permit, you know, if they're right, it'd be cool, so. That's, I think that's the only, I think, I got my, I think he's a conversation with Scott, I'm not sure if he's back or not. But if he is back, he'll be on top of it as well. And, and also, I guess, Barbara, on the nine-one-one, that cat wing, they did, I expect only lose a worker in there. So she was unable to attend because she is working nights at the moment, is still in that position. So she got off at six P M. and was going air, and so she's, he's in that trying to split.
And Andrew, I know you and I have talked about possibly having a portable air conditioning unit here in the future. I don't know where the council would want to purchase that from. Certainly gets quotes to get one. Do you know roughly how much they are?
If I had you from the hip, they're going to be the ballpark, anywhere from four hundred to six hundred dollars, I would guess, per unit. I, I do own a couple of them myself, and I just ran some from Sam's Club, carry them this time of year, and they're roughly four hundred dollars.
Okay, great. Thank you, anybody have anything else? Okay, hi to you, Andrew.
Yep, yep, everybody's very welcome, and everybody have a great day.
You too, thanks.
Okay, so what's, what's going on with the heating system? I've had calls from several members here, they're not happy with this RFQ because it just keeps extending it. And it seems like the majority of the council wants the system we have fixed and get that chimney taken care of. Am I correct in that, in what I've been told?
I didn't know we were going to be talking about that. Okay, I'll go back on speaker. Okay, dead lady, repeat your question again.
Andrew, we've got questions about, I've talked, I've had the majority of the council members call and talk to me about their, they're not happy with this RFQ, it just keeps postponing this heating system. We have said all along, we want what we have fixed and get that done. Get a quote out, out there so local people can quote on it. Fix our heating system and get the chimney fixed. Do, do you want us to take a vote to tell you what we're going to fund and so that we can get some action taken on this?
Well, first of all, I'm not sure anything can be delayed anymore. We're in the middle of RFQ process now. With those bids due in July, I'm not sure that it's been clearly stated that you guys want to re, that you guys are only off, option is to keep the boiler system. I don't know if that's ever been reasoned, that I've been made aware of.
Right, and we can do that today, if you'd like.
What's that?
We can do that today because I believe the majority of the council wants what we have fixed.
Uh.
And that's what they want to fund.
That, that's what you guys want to fund is a, a boiler system fixed.
Yes. I believe that. And we'll, we'll be glad to take a vote for you, so you know, because this RFQ is, one, it's keeping some local people from, from bidding on it. And two, it just is delaying this system on and on and on, and we've been talking about this for a year.
Keeping local people from bidding on it.
So remember though, even if we change systems, first of all, that RFQ is not keeping people from bidding on this project. That's, that's the whole misconception here. The RFQ, even though a local person doesn't want to define system to take the liability, or does not mean that they will not even want to sell the product and implement that product. So that's the misconception on RFQ development. The, the second part of that is, is if you, if we do go with a new boiler system, RFQ will, you know, if they want a new boiler, that's great, that can be part of the RFQ, we can, we can tell them what we want. That's because we want a RFQ, and that doesn't mean we're getting any other system. We get to designate that, but because that new boiler system will be over a hundred and fifty thousand for a replacement, we, we still have to go to public, we can't just take it and say, hey, this is a project. It still has to be advertised, and it's hard to handle.
Is here what Jim Lee had to say?
No, I'm sorry.
We, we don't have to get RFQs, just fix what we have right now, get new controls on things.
As long as it's supposed to, that is correct.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's what council wants done.
But, but I believe that Scott had already dropped from the hip, he changes the value on replacement of a boiler system, and it was substantially more than a hundred and fifty thousand to fix everything we had.
Well, that included air conditioning and all that. We just want to get the boilers fixed right now.
Okay, I, I mean, we can, I'm not sure legality wise, what we can and can't do with the RFQ process, but we can get with intent on that and see what can be done.
Okay.
But I, I guess as far as you guys are concerned, if you want to say a budget and say this is the only thing the council is willing to pay for under this circumstance, then I, I think that needs to be said clearly and stone that the council is only willing to pay for this much of the system, of whatever system you guys think you can fund.
Well, I think we said we want the system we have repaired, and we get a quote for that and get it repaired. Whoever's got the best quote that's going to fix it, we're going to approve the money for, am I correct? Anyone shaking their heads, yes?
Okay, well, we, we will, I, I will give a hint and see what we can, what we can get done with RFQ and process, and we'll go from there.
Okay, well, I mean, we're not even talking about the RFQ because we don't even know if we'll fund that RFQ.
I understand that the list will miss RFQ instead of public. I can't just say that, like, there's, there's.
I think it says on there that it can be pulled at any time.
What's that?
I believe it says in the RFQ it can be pulled at any time.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's, that's why I want to make sure with the cat and just be sure. I don't want to make any loopholes and get the county trouble for any mess there. So, so obviously, there's going to be a, a quote with Scott, I mean, you guys in particular, and the rest of you guys, want to go? Is there anything else to be delayed on the table?
Well, I mean, Jim McKee's got someone that wants a quote on that too, right, Reynolds?
Yeah, Brandon said he could meet the RFQ requirements also and be interested. But I, I think Brandon wanted engineers so he would have any liability.
And, and how much do you guys want to spend on this?
Well, we got to get votes first.
Okay, well, we, I mean, we had votes, and everything's always too much, so.
Okay, yeah, the bottom of this legal notice says, county board of commissioners reserves the right to terminate this project prior to bids being received, to reject any and all proposals, to waive any irregularities, and be the sole judge of the value and merit of the proposal offered. That's in the legal notice on that.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything else? We, we just want to get that heating system fixed. And that's what we've said all along, and it just keeps getting dragged out.
Well, we are trying to fix for the cost savings and everything for the air conditioning, the heat replacement, and the heating system. We're trying to get Scott and any more economic, projected goal instead of a short-term fix, is what we're after.
Well, I believe that was.
More of the next fifteen years as a total, so it's what we stand as short-term, a fixing both of them.
Jim didn't say twenty to thirty years repairing this system we have, it's a lot.
Yeah, well, that, that's just a, that's just a long projected timeline, though we can't, you can't be based on that because if that thing breaks down in five years, you're not going to like, and he said twenty, thirty years. Unless he's going to guarantee a warranty for twenty to thirty years, I think that's going to be a little different story.
Then that's going to be with any system, but I, I'm just telling you what the council ha- has told me in our discussions about it. I'm passing it along, but we, we've said all along, we want the system fixed, and it just keeps giving delay, delay.
I understand, and I think from the commissioner's standpoint, we are, we have to present you with several options of fixing that. You just haven't liked with that. So, so now you're being very specific that you only want to, to fix the existing boilers. That's, you know, that's a much different statement than saying we want the system finished in a general. So now that we know that, we can, we can point that direction.
Okay. Yeah, we want that to include the chimney too, bringing that down and getting in line, correct? Yes.
Okay.
Okay? Anything else for Andrew over here?
What about this, what about this, could we just pop that nine-one-one, they got a problem?
Yeah, they're going to, they're working on that fix, and that's something too, it's probably going to have to be done down. So we're, it's like a tool system, let's get the heating system fixed for one of them. Anything else?
I've got an email for you.
Okay.
June twenty-ninth, I want to do a single project, uh, at, uh, the exercise is put on by, determined by the state, but it's for the northern region of Indiana. There'll be about forty, maybe forty counties involved in this. It is on civil unrest activity. And people will be in, you'll see, we have a county chair, the city of West Columbus, EMS, fire, the dispatch. And we're going to do this over a year, kind of like a Zoom. And what we've done, what we've been working with with law enforcement is a civil unrest plan so that we can have something planned ahead of time. But anyway, the exercise, it's on the planning, starts at nine thirty, registrations at nine. We come in, I hope, three, four, coming in, third, fourth, and fifth. And what the other state, part of the state is doing, part of the unrest, kind of planning.
It'll be down here.
It'll be down by you.
Zero two.
So, if you want to, or Zoom, or Zoom.
And also, the one-day county council, state conference is June twenty-sixth. If you haven't got a notice, if you do want registers, let Polly know, she can register and pay your fees with the county. Yeah. Yeah, it's a plane, it's always been over at the casino, over in Shelbyville. This year it's. Do we want to make a motion that we recommend the commissioners that they repair the boiler system and bring the chimney down? Okay, someone want to make that motion, say it, Charlie? And then third second, Jim Lee? Those in favor? Seven oh. Pass that to the attorney next, maybe they can. Yes. Started on my ass. Okay, anything else, anyone have anything else? Meeting is July twelfth, nine A M.